No, 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 I'm, because it wasn't meant to that way. So I was wrong.
I, I.
I cannot confirm or deny.
It started.
Okay, let's do it. Should we just stop chatting? Have a fun.
This is here, it's IC.
We have one advertisement for.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Good evening, everybody. Everybody could take their seats. I'd like to get started. My name is Carly Aubrey with the City of Falls Church. I'm a principal planner. I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. Also, with the planning staff tonight here, we have Shayna Schaefer and Cameron Garrus. And then we also have some members of City Council and Planning Commission. I would like to take a quick poll, who we have here in the audience. How many are on a city board and commission? Okay, great. And then how many city residents are there? Okay. How many county residents are there? Okay, excellent. How many of you, is this your first time coming to a meeting about this project? Nobody. Wow. All right. Well, then I'm just going to, hm? Okay.
How many developers?
Or how many developers here? Yeah. Who all here is on the development team? But I'll let them introduce themselves in more detail in a minute. But first, I'd like to talk about where we are at with this project and then where our next steps, where we're going from here. So on July 8th, City Council approved the special exception entitlement, and that laid the groundwork for the project. It approved the conceptual plan, and that talks about the general locations of the buildings, the height of the buildings, the location type, and amount of the individual uses on the site, as well as the transportation elements and public facilities and utilities. So now, what we are in the midst of is the special exception site plan process, and that's going to be reviewed against city code and criteria, or city code criteria and standards for special exceptions and site plans. So these are going to be a much more detailed set of plans that we're going to be seeing. It's going to have more details on stormwater management facilities, the landscaping, such as the actual type and species of plants, or in the numbers, number of parking spaces, and architectural materials and colors. So that review will be similar to what we did for the SCE. It will be submitted and then go through a review by city staff. It will then go to City Council. Will they, where they will refer it out to the city's boards and commissions, as well as the school board, and that, in the public, and that will be, the purpose of that is to get comments from all those entities, and then there will likely be at least one resubmission to address the comments received, and then it'll go back to the City Council for action. So tonight, the purpose is to get an update on where the applicant is with the development of their SESP application. The focus is going to be on placemaking elements, the site design, and some conceptual architectural concepts that they're looking at. A formal application is anticipated in January of 2020, so between now and then, we'll have, in addition to this meeting tonight, a town hall on December 12th, and there will be another work session in front of the school board and City Council. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to the development team, and then they'll go through the presentation, about 30, 45 minutes, and then we'll open up to questions.
I'm going to turn my timer on, not, I'm not reading my emails, but just that, oh, is this your notebook?
That's mine.
That's yours, okay. So I'm going to turn this on just so that I can keep pace, so I don't go on too long. I could talk about this project for hours, which I've often done, so to be respectful, I'll just keep the timer on. So I'm Evan Goldman. I'm a Executive Vice President of Development and Acquisitions for EYA. We're one of the partners working on this project, and?
I'm Laura Schoenfeld from Hoffman &amp; Associates. We are the other partner working on this project. In addition, we have Regency as our retail partner.
Exactly. And then we have a few team members. Why don't you guys just kind of raise your hand and just say what your role is, quickly?
Gabriela Pinto Clark from Land Design, Landscape Architect.
Brian Tomano from Tordi Gallison Partners, Urban Design and Architecture.
Ed Sheeran with Walter Phillips, we're doing the Civil Engineering.
Amy Friedlander with EYA.
Great. I was like, oh, no, she's not part of our team. I was like, just introduce yourself, anyway. Okay, so first of all, thank you all for taking time on an evening. We know how busy everybody is to come out and see some early concept designs for the project. We have, our goal here was, although, you know, typically you would have somebody just submit an SESP application and then start the community outreach process, our thought was to get as far ahead of this as possible and show you pieces along the way. So since last we met, a number of months ago, we've been focused on placemaking, urban planning, the open space within the Commons, and then we've also been focused on architectural design. So you'll see very, very early initial sketches for architectural design that are black and white, and then when we come back to you again in December, you'll start seeing colors and materials in more detail, as well as we'll have started incorporating changes based upon comments that we've heard in these past few meetings. We've done, this will be our fourth, one of these meetings in the last 27 hours, and the reason for that was specifically to do it all very close together, so the council and the public and the schools and the staff are all hearing about the project at the same time, and not a few weeks apart, and weren't getting stale information. So we appreciate all of you working and being flexible on that from a timing perspective.
Yeah, so I'd say we've honed this part up to about 35 minutes, so that gives you a good anticipated timing, and then I think we'll, we'll take all the questions after that, open, open for discussion.
So since last we met, the, actually, one question. Does anybody know how to dim the lights a little bit, like yesterday? That was helpful. They were just a little bit dimmer. Just because the, the pointer doesn't show up as well when it's bright. Oh, yeah, that's great. Perfect. Oh, yeah, totally cool.
Okay.
Okay, so now you guys can see the pointer. So I'll point on that screen over there, and there we go. I'm going to push this out a little bit. Okay, so, some of the, one of the, probably the biggest update from the last time we presented to this group a number of months ago, is that since that time, Womata has, in fact, selected a developer for their site, which is EYA, Hoffman Associates, as well as Rushmark. Rushmark is the developer that had built the Harris Teeter Building within, a project within the city, and they're also the chosen developer for the Virginia Tech site. So we now have one developer group coordinating the development of the entire 40-acre area from the metro station all the way to Route 7. And so the goal there is, the real goal there is just to make sure we're coordinating. Womata will still go through their public review process, the county has to go through their comprehensive plan process, and we are working on their behalf to get through that process. So that's just, you know, interesting information that is helpful. This is, you know, starts showing all three pieces of property together, with the high school site being the furthest to the left, the Virginia Tech parcel in the middle, and the Womata site. This is clearly just a blocking diagram showing some streets and starting to show blocks of potential development, but the big concept is that the, oh, sorry, this pointer doesn't work so well, that the, the big move of our project, which was creating this new street that was connected around to Haycock, is something you're now seeing in this plan. The idea of extending the Commons Park beyond just our property onto the Virginia Tech property, the idea of that just becoming a bigger open space, which was one of the big ideas of our RFQ submission, is now starting to get a little further along. There's a lot of work to do on the county side, so this is no guarantee that that will 100% happen, but we feel really confident that we've got, that it will. So when we submitted our SCE last time, this is what it looked like, the Commons Park space, which is where the majority of our placemaking attention will be spent, and so that's where we were before. And when we left this group, this is really good, actually. Wow. It's much better than actually speaking to it, isn't it? So when we left all of you, we spent the summer doing a whole, whole bunch of workshops on placemaking and design. We had two consulting teams working with us on that, one of which is Tordi Gallis, and one of which was Land Design. They're both here tonight. They're the landscape architects for the project, as well as our master planners. And we started thinking about how do we make this Commons, how do we maximize the use and the utility of it? How do we make it a really exciting place? How do we make it, you know, a park space one day and an active, you know, activity space the next day, and a place for kids, and a place for adults? There's a few key phrases that came out of that process, but probably the most important was this idea of ageless play, and so that we're designing things here that work just as well for kids as they might for adults. And so that, you know, piece of sculpture and art that a kid was climbing on in the morning, in the evening, might become a beautiful piece of art that adults are sitting around and talking, or, or using in another way. You'll see different elements of that throughout this presentation. This is a sketch of the Commons, and in our initial kickoff placemaking meetings, we literally rolled out on a table this size, an entire large plan of the Commons Park, and started sketching with Sharpies and trying to figure out what are the different pieces of the Commons and how does it want to feel throughout? It's a, it's a process that I had gone through in my time at Federal Realty, Pike, on Pike and Rose, the Hoffman folks have certainly done on their projects, and all great kind of placemaking folks think about their plan at that very large scale. How do you make every single nook and cranny of this space feel great? So there's different zones. This is conceptual, so this is three months old. You'll see a newer version of where we've ended up in a few moments. But on the far left is the idea of this Zone 1 being the front door of the project, some sort of key signage element, or sorry, key sculptural element or artwork, something that is a beacon, that is the entrance to the project, a bunch of stormwater management and landscape, so people slow down as they come off Route 7 into the project and realize that they're in a different type of space. We call it kind of an oasis off of the Pike. As you get to Zone 2, it starts to get a little more active. In this concept, we were doing food and beverage and outdoor seating, a coffee shop or an ice cream shop, and integrating stormwater management. In Zone 3, which is the central park space that's largely open, so we can have events. And Zone 4 is the food and beverage zone, which in reality is more of the active adult zone, which we'll talk about in a moment. And then the play area was on the backside of the project towards Virginia Tech for kids. That's now changed, and so I'll walk you through this, but then you'll see where it's ended up, with the play area moving closer in into a safer space within the project. But the characteristics of these are each different, so some are more soft and planterly, some are more hardscape oriented, you know, some is just open, some are more, you know, closed in with trees, and so each space will feel a little bit different as you go through it. So at the entrance to the project, the idea is iconic, some sort of iconic artwork or sculpture. We thought about a second idea, so Ageless Play was the first. The second idea we've been playing around with is for the stormwater management and the environmental benefits of the project to be integrated into the placemaking, and so whether the sculpture has some elements of stormwater management, or water, or, or, you know, how we are dealing with the environmental issues in the region, that might be a way to go. It could just be that it's something fun and quirky, like the Colored Squirrel, where everyone knows that that's where the project is. We haven't gotten that far along yet, and we would work with the community on that, but that's our thought so far. As you move a little bit further beyond that first element, you get into a stormwater management zone, and this is, this is an area where we want to do things that are flexible, so they are, they may be stormwater management in a storm, but during the day, if it's a nice, bright, sunny day and there's not water, they can be used as play spaces as well, or open spaces. So for example, that bottom right photo, wow, sorry. We have learned our lesson. We are going to bring our own pointers for future meetings. Okay, there we go. So this bottom image here is a stormwater management area, but that's sunken, but can also be used, you can imagine sitting outside and eating your lunch on the steps, you can imagine kids playing in this when it's dry, and so spaces that don't, that are multifunctional is really important. Our Commons area is .9 acres, expanded when we close streets, it gets up to almost two acres, so we really have to use every inch of it as much as possible. Same here, these are stormwater management bio retention facilities along the side here that are also great for sitting and, and potentially playing, for sitting outside and eating. You can see these sculptural elements coming out of a stormwater management facility. This is a retail kiosk where there's a little bit of water behind it, and you can imagine water spilling off of that space into there. And so thinking about how water is integrated into the project is really critical to us. As we go a little further north now, you're starting to see images of potential kiosk concepts, you know, the, the kind of stand, the ice cream stand, or it could be a coffee stand, the idea of a green roof on top of that kiosk building, so it looks pretty both from above as well as from below. And then that green roof integrating, we've had these ideas of, you know, is there a water that kind of spills off of it and runs down a pipe into a runnel, which is what that element is right here, into a stormwater management facility? And so you're really seeing how stormwater, stormwater is being dealt with on the site over time. As we've talked to the schools about that, there's this possibility of them using this for an educational opportunity, where their kids, who are in these upper level science classes, are actually coming out, or even middle school, learning about how you deal with different environmental conditions, how you deal with stormwater, stormwater overall. As we get to the next zone, and this has now shifted, but in this case, it was on the south end of the project, was this kind of a play area that's both young and adult play, so you can imagine kids as well as adults playing with that chessboard. This may not specifically be the items that we want to place in that zone, but we're giving you a sense of what it might look and feel like from other projects. So up the top, images from Santana Row in California, the life-size chess pieces are extremely popular all throughout the day. They're surrounded by chess boards as well, and so you have a chess team that locally plays there, does their competitions there, and there's people actively sitting there throughout the day on, you know, two to three days a week, certainly on Saturdays. You know, whether it's Scrabble or it's ping pong, the idea is to create some activities for people to get together, to put our phones away and enjoy each other's company, play a game, do something actively, actively within the space. And part of this is that we want the space throughout the entire week for there to be something going on, whether it's people meeting up to go on a jog, or a walk, or a run, or it's a grandparent that's living in the senior housing facility, taking their kid to the park and playing with the chessboard, or with the water feature, or it's, you know, outdoor dining in the evening. We want it to be alive and active, and so we've got to create these little inspirational moments for them. Lighting will be really critical, and how we deal with lighting, shade will be really critical as well, and so we've started thinking about how we integrate shade within the space so that in the summer, people can still enjoy it. We now get to the park, the open space, and within that open space, we thought through these ideas of kind of terraced hills within it, so that places where you could sit out, lean back, watch a movie at night, or also kids can play and roll and enjoy. Shade structures, whether it's trees, or it's literally movable structures, coming up with ideas for how we can make it pleasant in the summer. Using seating as an element to corral, and so we know we're going to have a lot of kids here. Falls Church has a ton of kids, and so thinking about how do you create safe play spaces for those children, where they're not running out into the middle of the street, and they've got a place where they can run around and parents can relax. This bottom right image is artwork. This is in Baltimore. That's a crushed stainless tin can that is a beautiful piece of art when no one's in the park, or when you're just seeing it from the side street, but it's also this really cool element that in the, in the afternoons, you see kids climbing inside it and playing. Those are the types of art features we're thinking through, so that they're, they're multifunctional as well. Pretty, but then also can have a use. The open space itself will be open, as you can see here, and so these are spaces where you can have a movie night, or yoga in the park, or, you know, outdoor gatherings, picnics. You know, there'll be little elements of art throughout, you know, the little avocado seats or something cute that we liked, you know, whimsy, whether that's the element or something else, the idea is to work on some really fun stuff. We're also going to want to really hear from the boards and commissions from a history, historic perspective, understand parts of Falls Church that we can weave into the story of the placemaking and the art throughout the project, so don't be shy. This may not be the right forum, given that there's 40 people in the room, but reach out to us by email, get in touch with us, we can have coffee. We'd love to hear input from people, so we're making sure that we're thinking through those.
And we're going on a historic bus tour with your historic commission on the 3rd of December, I think?
December 3rd, I believe it is.
I think, 4th? Yeah, it just got finalized today, so we're excited to take a tour of the rest of Falls Church to continue to learn more from, from your constituents.
As we move next to the northern part of the site, this is kind of the active adult play, and what you're seeing is this kind of terraced bleacher seating on the bottom left. The schools actually have one of those inside their new school that they're building as well. They're kind of places where you can have a pickup class, you know, if it's a beautiful day, the high school, the middle school could take their kids out and actually do a classroom outside. Virginia Tech is right next door, so you could have a similar function happening from that, for them as well. From a programming perspective, it's a type of thing where parents can meet up and, you know, whether there's a balloon person, or a comedian, or a, or, not comedian, a balloon person, or a, you know, a juggler, or a clown, music, something that people can entertain themselves and sit and enjoy, or on an evening, just sitting out with your, you know, partner, having a good time, watching the activity in the park, having your lunch during the day. So those, that bleacher seating kind of gets you elevated outside the park. We want to have some three-dimensional analogy to the park space as well. Looking at kind of specialty lighting and how we use lighting to make it feel comfortable and safe, but not too bright. And then this idea of swings or something tactile that's fun throughout the park as well. And then on the northern side, this has now moved, but originally we thought of this on the northern side, water features, play area, something that's a little bit more for the kids specifically, whereas, as the, a lot of the other stuff will be multi-dimensional. But even here, this concept on the south, the bottom left slide image, I should say, which is a water fountain for kids, is also kind of beautiful artwork in the winter, could be, it's a Chinese walking circle for contemplation, and so you get use of that throughout the year. We've got to think through, how do we make sure that we're not just an eight-month-of-the-year place, and that even in the dead of the winter, there's some stuff to come outside and do? And I think the last image, sorry, the prior image showed this outdoor fire pit as well, and that's that same concept. How do we get people to engage in the outdoors, even in the winter, so that we don't have a completely dead space? And that's helpful for the retail to thrive, it's also helpful to give the community places to go. Art and murals is something where we want to have throughout. These are just examples from other projects, but we will be working with local artists, working with the local community, as well as other artists, to come up with a mural program throughout the project. So as you're walking through different spaces, on any given day, you might see something different that you hadn't noticed in the past, and, you know, little moments like some of these, where they're Instagram-type photos, to kind of larger murals that might be purposeful or showing you where parking is, or things of that sort. So after going through this initial kind of two months of placemaking study and analysis, we modified the Commons slightly. The big, the only real change was this idea of actually having the sidewalk go meander through the entire site, instead of just having it run linearly along both sides. We wanted to make sure that people were taking the time to go through the site, kind of stopping along the way at all these different rooms that we're going to be creating, so that you're, you have the ability to stroll and enjoy and experience it differently each time. We would still have the bike lanes running along the sides, we also have sidewalks running up and down the retail streets, so there's plenty of, for people that just want to get through it, there's plenty of places to do that, but that common space in the middle really becomes more engaging. And what that led to is, this, that was our initial concept, and then this is our most current concept, which is kind of the open space here, you're seeing swings along the southern edge here. There's a kind of a picture of what they might look like. You're seeing these, these big green spaces, is the idea of the rolling turf at one edge of the site. Hardscape here, so that when we close down this street evenings and weekends, this feels like one big open space. We have a restaurant on the upper north end, just to keep that open space active, that has an outside rooftop terrace to it, so from that upstairs, you once again can look out over the park, and then you can see the bleacher seating going up to that space, so there's people sitting on the stairs as well. You've got an act, a game, an adult game area here, which is your ping pong and your chess and other items like that. On the south side, you're now seeing the Kid Splash Park here in blue, which is integrated into the stormwater management area here, and then this, you know, if that's an ice cream place or a coffee shop, you can sit and watch your kids play. And so that's where the Commons has started to evolve to, and we've started to think about, well, how, what does that hap, what happens to it during different events of the year? So Monday through Friday, during the day, that last image is what the Commons will look and feel like, be active and engaging, but it will be limited, the streets will all be open. Evenings and weekends, we have the opportunity for different events, working with the city, and working with the schools, to close down certain streets, and so if we were to close down this one street, evenings and weekends, this becomes a half-acre park, which is a pretty nice space, gives you a sense of scale. It's, it's similar in size to Lincoln Park, which is something on the eastern end of the city that you might know, with the tennis court, and so it's a pretty, pretty nice sizable space. And that could be great for movie night, you can see the movie screen here at the end of the park, you can see all these tiny little white dots are people, so you're, you're really, you can really fill this with hundreds of people for a nice, for a movie night. You know, whether it's a food truck rally on the north side, where we just closed down these two lanes and create an active space within this zone, or it's something larger, like a concert night, now where we've closed down these two roads and integrated them into the project, you're at 50,000 over an acre. It's an 1.15 acres, you've got a stage here and a lot of people sitting out, whether you're watching the concert from the rooftop, eating dinner, or from the stairs, or from the rolling hills, or from the lawn, there's a whole bunch, or the swings, there's a whole bunch of different places to engage in that event, to watch it, or to literally be part of it. When we go something bigger, you know, maybe the once every month or two event, the larger scale events, these become kind of, or maybe seasonal, once every four times a year, we close down all the streets, all of the parking garages are accessible from the, from the side streets and from the alleys that we've created in the project, so we can close it down without interrupting traffic there, traffic to the project specifically. But you can see we can have a two-acre zone for larger events, Battle of the Bands. This came out of a conversation we'd have with the schools, we were talking about their music program, and do, can, you know, do we do something out on the common space where we're celebrating the music in the community, both within and without the, from outside the schools, where you set up a whole bunch of stages and you have different music going on? Something like this, Taste of Falls Church, an event that already happens in the city, the ability to potentially have that move into this location, if that's something that's desired by the city, or other events of similar style, where you can really take advantage of this much larger, almost two-acre public space. And to give you a sense of scale, so two acres is, well, I have a park diagram at the last slide, but two acres is a sizable park. You have a number of parks throughout the city that are in the kind of half-acre to an acre and a half, up to two-acre zone, so I'll, I'll give you a sense of scale of what that would look and feel like. So that's where we've gotten to from a placemaking, site design perspective so far, and you'll see more in the coming months, and then with our submission in January. Architecturally, we're now catching up as well, so these are black and white images, you'll see some black and white architectural images of each of the buildings. What you're looking at here is the corner of Haycock and Route 7 with the school off in the distance. These buildings that are ghosted are the future Phase 2 buildings, and so those won't be part of this application. And then what you're seeing here, one of the unique things that we're requesting as part of our SESP, and we'll have to work with staff on this, is the idea that that office building could be as, as proposed, or it could be taller, so that what, before we get to our permits and we start breaking ground, we may ask for that building to be slightly taller, if tenant, if office leasing is going well, and we know that office square footage is very important to the city because it provides tax revenue without draining school resources, so that's something we're going to request as part of the SESP, as an alternate option. As you look at this, this is the entrance to the project, so the multifamily apartment building on the right, condo building here, office building, we're on Route 7 right here. The senior housing building is blocked out in white so far because we've just selected our partner recently, and so they're catching up from an architectural perspective. You'll start seeing those images in the future. And then the hotel and the smaller residential building off in the distance. The view from the schools itself, we were careful to make sure that these buildings are almost exactly as we had proposed them in the SCE, so there were no surprises for the schools, with the lower density part of the, of those buildings closest to their plaza, and the tallest parts on the northern side, so we're not breaking up their plaza into shadows, or making their plaza have shadows. And then an image coming from Mustang Alley, so Haycock Road, Route 7, Mustang Alley is the new street that'll connect you to the high school and middle school. There's an opportunity for art on this garage in coordination with the schools, as kind of a sign and gateway to the schools, and so we'll be working with them on that. And then just the Commons, and what this just shows is kind of differentiation in heights, setbacks in the buildings, this idea to kind of create interest amongst the architecture along the Commons. There were three changes from the SCE that we'll talk about tonight, that we were requesting. The first one is that this cut through here, that goes underneath the condo building, originally was straight, we've now angled it so that we can get closer to the grocery entrance. So there's one grocery entrance here at Haycock, one here, and we wanted that grocery and the retail to feel closer to the rest of the retail of the project, and so we've angled that. The condo entrance is right here in gray, so as you walk through that space, you have retail on both sides of you, condo entrance here, and then as a result of that change, we've actually moved our second multifamily apartment entrance over here, so that our apartment residents can get right out into the plaza as well and walk towards the Commons. So that's the first change. The second change, which is a larger change, is a result of grade of the amount of hill, the amount of topography we have on the site, and so many of you probably know this already, we have 20, 26 feet, right, of grade from Haycock, sorry, from Leesworth Pike all the way down to Haycock. And originally, the idea was for Street A to be kind of an alley street or a secondary street that ran through it, and we were, as we started designing the project, that street started to get close to 10 or 11% in slope, which is beyond where you'd want it to be for handicap accessibility and to make it a safe environment for people and inclusive, and so, secondly, we started getting slope along the Commons, and so this was sloping seven feet, and what that meant is, it would be harder for us to do outdoor And what that meant is, it would be harder for us to do outdoor cafe seating, it'd be harder for us to do continuous retail slabs and have flexibility for the retail tenants themselves. And so we battled with this for months, and ultimately decided that, you know, we should do this. It's what we did at Pike and Rose, it's what we did at Bethesda, where the garage actually takes up the grade. You come in off Haycock, this is open air. You enter the garage here at the lowest level, or you can come in off Street A or the one earth, this alley, and enter the garage at Level 3, circulate through that garage. It gives you access out to Mustang Alley at Level 2, and so you can now get in and out of that garage in all three directions. And it also allows the parking that used to be under this building to also kind of flexibly get out throughout the project more directly. So it's, it's a little bit different. We've maintained a pedestrian and elevator connection, so for people that want to walk from the Federal Realty Shopping Center through to the commons, that will be there, in an open air style, and we're working on that design now. But the garage will allow us to take up the grade. And now what happens is, all of this is essentially flat. And so when we have the commons as a big open space, or a park space, or events, you're not dealing with hills and seat walls and things like that, you're dealing with a relatively flat space. Oh, sorry. And then the third change is over here, which is on the left side of the plan. Originally, our office lobby was center of this building and corner of this building. Our hotel lobby was up here. And what the change is, we wanted to bring those together to create an active node, and to make this an extension of the commons. And it's not really showing it here because it's showing it as gray, but the idea is that this has kind of a prettier paving and nice materials and placemaking, and feels like the commons in some ways, or a smaller extension of it. And the hotel entrance, the music venue entrance, and the two office building entrances all work together and create a really nice special space with a green space in the distance that can be stormwater management and sculpture. And what that also allows us to do is have a continuous retail street here, and not to have this building feel like it's off in the distance. We were a little worried about it feeling like it was cut off from the rest of the project. We'll now go into architecture for each of the buildings, so bear with us. This is the corner building at Haycock and 7. The precedent images for this building, because it's a low, long building, it's one of the biggest, it is the biggest building on the site, we started looking at kind of warehouse style buildings from kind of the 1900s to 1960s, kind of have a historic flavor, some of them being really truly historic in character, some being more modern interpretations of what a warehouse would have been. And this being kind of the chamfer at the corner of the building, that's something we have on our site, given the way our, our property line is. And that led us to a design, this is obviously a conceptual design, but led us to an architecture that is similar to this, or sorry, is this, where we have four different building facades. One is here, it's a kind of a warehouse style building. Our grocery store is all along here. The entrance to the grocery is right at the corner of Haycock and 7, and there's a second entrance down here. We have a second style architecture that's a little more modern, so that these look like two separate buildings even though they're one. There's a third building right here, and then a fourth building within the one earth. They're all connected inside, but from the outside, they would feel like separate buildings. This is the architecture at the corner, the entrance to this, we're calling it a one earth, which is a kind of a shared space where it's cars and pedestrians, there'll be outdoor cafe seating for the market part of the grocery, which is right here. And so this is kind of a little special building. We like to create these throughout projects where there's, you know, little buildings that feel like they may have been the old historic buildings that were originally there. If you think of any great city in the country where you have these 25 foot wide little buildings, on the way we used to build buildings. And so, so that's the concept for this little building here, attached to the warehouse building. You can then see in the distance, when we get to the loading zones for those buildings, the facade gets a little simpler. And then on the Haycock side, you can see the grade coming down from Route 7 on Haycock. And then what we've created is that pedestrian access, this is the stair component, you go up and then through to the commons. And there would also be an elevator access as well for pedestrians to get in and up and over to the commons. And it, as you can tell, from looking at this, it feels open, the stairs are actually external to that space, and then we have placemaking ideas for how to make that experience as you walk through. It's only 120 feet long, so it's not particularly long, but to make that space feel special in there. So I'm going to hand it over to Laura for the next three buildings, and then I'll talk to you again in a moment.
Okay. So the next building we have is the condo building, which is next to obviously the apartment. I think you'll start to see a theme here in that all of the buildings have kind of a similar design language of pretty clean geometry, but each expressed in a different way, to give the buildings a unique character, and then we'll continue to work through that with, with the finishes. So we want to make sure everything talks to each other, but doesn't feel too repetitive. So the precedent images we had for the condo, you can still see some of the similar shapes for the apartment, but the condo, we are looking at more detailing to make the building feel that we've done kind of just one facade instead of the multiple breaks that Evan was talking about for the larger apartment building. So images like this one with the detailing, where you'll actually, you'll see this in a further image, but there's actually two steps back before you get to the window, or there is some patterning on the windows here, still can keep a simple geometric form, but be a little bit more visually interesting. So this is the, the condo from commons, ooh, sorry, this is commons, this is 7, and you are seeing, again, the simpler geometry, but a lot of push and pull by different parts of the facade sticking out, and the way that the balconies are a bit proud of the building. One of the really interesting features of this space is, if you remember a few slides earlier, where we talked about some changes that we made, and I'll show you a better image, but this is the via through. It's a little bit easier to see here, so if you're standing on the commons, you're looking through this cut below the building, and beyond it, you're going to see the grocery store and the cafe and kind of people spilling out onto the street. In addition, the entrance to the condo is right here, so it's, and retail is lining both sides. So based on all of those pieces, plus interesting flooring, interesting lighting, this is going to really feel like an inviting space that you want to go into. In addition, on the second floor of this, we have this space here is the amenity space for the condo building, and what you're actually seeing is the outdoor terrace of that. So this kind of darker area and the organic looking white area here is actually kind of a dense green roof that's going to be spilling out over the edges. So you'll see this building with kind of the darker forms, and then kind of this, especially at night, kind of glowing box that you're going to want to go towards and see, see what's going on beyond that. This is just an example of one of the facade ideas that we're working through, again, with kind of the steps and the interesting detailing at the windows to make the facade a little bit more vibrant. And then we go across the street, and as you think about the condo building on this side, it has a bit of a step back from the commons. We've decided to go in a different direction on two of the buildings on this side. This is the office. We actually have an angled piece that kind of brings you visually into the space, and then is continued with this building here that Evan will talk about in a few minutes. So our precedents for the office, we still wanted to make sure it felt modern and interesting, but a little bit different than maybe a glass tower you're going to see in Tyson's. We know that people are coming here because they want to be in Falls Church, and so we wanted to make sure that we had a bit of a different identity than other options in the area. So these are two, two different images, two different sides of the building, again, commons and Leesburg Pike, the main facade you're going to see on commons, has glass, but also these white, the white pattern is metal panels, and they actually kind of come together in a smaller piece at where the, the building is angled out. So we still have a big retail bay running around the entire bottom, and then this second facade, which speaks a little bit to the warehouse look that Evan was talking about, but interpreted a little bit differently. And then these are more images of kind of how that works. So this one is, you're looking at the commons, you're seeing that kind of piece that juts out a little bit, and then you're actually looking down that alley 3, which we'll have a much better name than that soon. You're seeing the office entry here, the next office entry back here, and the hotel and the civic entries are on the other side. Speaking of which, the hotel and the civic is the next one. I'll say with the hotel, it's a little bit less developed on the exterior. We've started working with a brand, we are also still in negotiation, so we haven't, we're not going to be announcing anything now, but the interior has had to be really worked out to make sure their room sizing and types could fit in, so the exterior is a little bit further behind, but that just means there'll be more to look at in, in our December presentation. So some of the precedents we're looking at here, we, sorry, let me go back. One of the other features, you'll see, I lost the, I lost the pointer. Okay, I found it again. Okay. The civic has, sorry, the hotel has the typical retail band at the, the first floor, but in this case also has part of our civic commitment, which is going to be about an 8,000 square foot indoor space, event space, music venue, where we're still working on exactly what the business plan will be for that. But in addition, it has about 4,000 square foot terrace outside. So if you imagine kind of the condo on one side, people are standing on the second floor, kind of looking down, having a connection to the commons on this side, you'll also have the same feature. People will be excited and want to know what's going on up there, so that will bring attention to it. So we are actually, right now, still, like I said, working on the design, but the idea is that this kind of two-story retail and civic, 30-foot building feels like a bit of a smaller building that may have existed before, with another, with the hotel kind of being brought in later, so kind of two different looks is what we're going for. You can see that in some of these examples, where you have kind of this brick lower bay, and then kind of different materiality above. They still work together because of shapes, because of the, the material palette, but a little bit of differentiation. So we're also looking at, again, making the brick building feel like it is, it has some kind of older style detailing, like brick arches or kind of irregular mullion patterning. And so, go to this one. This is really the best option, but again, there'll be more to look at next month. This is kind of looking from the commons. You're seeing the retail band here, you're seeing the civic here, you're seeing this great outdoor space, and then the hotel is above. This is kind of looking at it face on, and we think that there's a great opportunity for placemaking on this building, also a great opportunity for possible murals. Evan? Oh, I was like, where did Evan go?
Sorry.
Yes, that's fine.
So the last building in the project is the, the smaller, kind of micro residential rental apartment building. We believe this will end up with a younger or youthful demographic in the building because the units are much smaller, and so we went with a design for this building that is specifically much more modern. So most of the other stuff you've seen has brick and is more historic feeling. This building is very different than from other buildings in Falls Church. This is a building from Portland, Oregon. This building is in Minnesota, Minneapolis. And we liked this idea, this kind of high white, bright design, with black windows, with the integration of wood, with the integration of gray color, or some sort of metal panel, creates a beautiful canvas to the extent we do some muraling on it, but we loved that concept, and it just felt young and alive. And so we designed a building that has that feeling to it, and so this front facade is kind of an angled or curved, picking up on what we did with the office building, doing something similar with this building, where that is kind of a front facade for the residential. In some cases, the balconies come straight through the, to the, through that, so they're set back. In some cases, the windows go right to the building front facade. It's got behind it, it'll have some sort of a frame, you know, whether this is gray or it's terracotta color, we've been thinking through what that might be, but something that makes the white really pop in front of it. And it floats, the screen kind of floats above the retail behind, below it. And one thing to note, in all of these images, we were pretty simplistic with the retail storefronts and just kind of showed them as regular old stores. The concept here, we would have, we'll have retail storefront guidelines as part of our package that we'll share with the city, and we'll share in all of our leases with the tenants. The tenants will be creating individual facades for their retail spaces as they build them out, so that along the entire commons, you'll have a mixture of types of spaces, from, you know, mixture of colors, a mixture of signage, a mixture of, you know, operable, you know, roll-up windows to regular storefront, so that there's a lot of variety at the low level. Signage, a signage will be very controlled as well, what that looks and feels like, and we'll be doing a sign package with the city. But anyway, so that will pop at the lower levels. The next image is showing you coming down the commons from Virginia Tech now, so you've left the Womata site, you're coming through to our property, and it really is an entrance to the city, and it's kind of the back entrance to the project. So we've created kind of a modern interpretation of a tower element at that entry. So it's got the shape and feel of a tower, but it's more modern. The window pattern is modern, the, the paneling on the actual facade is more modern, even the way we've done the balconies offset. And that kind of leads you then into that kind of very, very nice bright white facade. From the high school side, this is looking at the back of the building, and so that same type of facade is repeated, where this has the elements of the tower, this has the elements of the white, bright facade that they play off each other. The residential entrance is right here in the nook of the building. And then this piece here is one of our civic commitments as well, which is where we'd like to see the music school go, facing the high school. And you can see, it kind of has a fun whimsical design to it, that our music school partner that we're talking to really loves. And on the upper level, that will be the outside amenity space for this building and recreation space. So with that, first of all, thank you. As you can tell, the architecture is still very conceptual, but the idea here tonight was to share this with the community, get some feedback and answer questions, and then come back in 60 days or so with something more, or 45 days, with something more developed. Any questions? Yeah?
Could I just, since we don't have a mobile mic?
Just talk loudly.
Try to speak up, and then also maybe if you could repeat the...
Repeat the question, sure.
Thank you.
So I want to talk about Street A and the block, you know, with the garage, the change, understanding. So I heard that one of the scenarios that really you talked about was, was the students coming and going to school. That is going to be a major through there, hooking in, and it's going to be tying into the rest of the west end.
Right.
That's going to be the tie-in. And it almost seems like now there's a block, there's a barrier that has been built, put in place to not only scooters and bikes, but you really can't go through there, and a barrier to integration with the rest of Falls Church.
Right. Thank you, yeah, I appreciate that. So we actually feel like we're doing it to avoid that, and I'll tell you why. Because we felt like where we were headed was in that direction. So when you have a street that's that heavy of a slope, it really becomes pretty inaccessible for most people, pretty uncomfortable for people, especially kids on bikes. And it creates the opposite situation, which we heard from the planning commission during our SCE review, which is, you can imagine kids leaving school, whether they're on a scooter or a bike, and going down a 10% sloped hill into Haycock, and creating an issue with accidents in that direction. So you could also imagine in icy weather in the winter, that becoming a really dangerous situation for pedestrians alike. So, and trust me, I am an urbanist through and through, so my greatest desire would be for that to be a street. If we didn't have a hill that we were dealing with, that would be a through street, because it is the right thing to do from an urban perspective. So we tried to come up with a way that might solve your exact concern, which is this. So number one, this used to be a hawk signal, that's now going to be a full traffic signal. So, so you'll be able to get pedestrians and bikes across at this intersection. This will be a full movement intersection as well. So this actually helps us in some way. We had a 12-foot shared use path running along this northern edge that was going to be shared between bikes and pedestrians, kids, school kids and bikes. And now what this really creates the dynamic is, the bikes are still going to go up there because they're not going to go up the stairs, and you create a separate, more safe pedestrian-oriented space where the kids can go walk through that as well, both of which get everybody back to the commons and over to the school. We also think there's going to be a big change in psychology along Haycock and Leesburg Pike, and I'll, in our next presentation in December, I'll bring some of these images for what we saw transformed at Pike and Rose. When we built that project at Old Georgetown Road and Rockville Pike, which is crazy busy, similar to Route 7, nobody walked outside on the streets there ever. And when we opened that project with kind of beautiful landscaping and this really broad sidewalk, it completely changed overnight to a place where people walk. Old Georgetown Road now has people walking out all the time. So our feeling is this, the Federal Realty frontage is actually quite nice, they've got a really nice brick sidewalk in front of their shopping center. The problem today is that, you know, this becomes pretty inaccessible, and so you're almost forced to go in to get across to the high school today. In reality, the high school's here and the middle school's here. So if this crossing is completely changed, which we're doing as part of the grant, we're making that a safer pedestrian crossing right here, and this is going to be a 12-foot wide, protected pedestrian, shared use path inside of landscaping, so you're really far from the cars, that becomes a safe space. And whether kids walk through the, through the one earth into that space and go through the site from a porous perspective all the way through, whether they come to the commons, whether they go here and come in this way, whether they ride their bike here and get on the bike lanes, the dedicated bike lanes and over, or whether they go up this direction and get on the bike lanes, we've actually created a lot more options for people to get to where they need to go, and every kid's going to choose a different path of how they want to get there. But we do think that this concept, it actually makes it safer. And then what it also does, if you think about the amount of seniors we have in the community, people who might be a giant and then want to go to the commons, it's really hard to walk up 10% slope if you're elderly. And so now you'll have an elevator option that will get you up to the commons versus having to climb up either the Haycock Hill, sorry, the 7 Hill, which we can't change, or this hill. Because today, real, in reality, we just are a hill. So this, this, you know, it's, it's excusable here because it's an existing road we're building up against, and so from a handicap accessibility perspective, you get a little more leeway when it's an existing street. It's a little difficult, more difficult when you're building a new street that is not handicap accessible. From a lawsuit perspective, it creates a situation where you've done something that really doesn't work for a good portion of the community. So that, so I'm totally with you, I'd rather that be a through street. Like I, it took us months of belly aching to come to this solution, but I do think ultimately it is the safer solution and probably the right solution long term. It does also provide more porosity for the parking as well, so it gives cars more ability to distribute. So if Haycock is backed up, you're not forced to go out that way, you have the ability to get through to Mustang Alley or come up to Street A and go out different ways, so that's helpful too. But I appreciate your point of view 100%.
I'm mostly worried about the stairs, coming up tunnel with a bit.
Yeah, let us show you, we have some thoughts from a design perspective on what's that's going to look like. We just came up with this idea within the last few weeks, so we...
You can extend the car, the entrance, something to the building, so that you use a little bit of the ground for the building, but shift it over.
Well, let us, let us show you images in December of where we think it's going to go. We have some, we already are working on some ideas, placemaking wise, art wise, lighting wise, to make that feel great, so. And I'll also show you examples of where we've done it successfully in the region. Thank you. The school parking lot over on the left?
Yeah.
I don't know the exact acreage of it. Do you know, Kristen? Like an acre and a half?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and then there will be, temporarily, while this, until this building gets built, this parking lot will extend down as well, so the school parking will be a little bit bigger than that. I, I don't know...
Dedicated school or...
Dedicated school parking, yeah. Sorry.
Like the week...
Yeah, that'll be up to the schools, whether they want to charge for parking for evening and weekend, but...
Which is switched over to school and not...
Yes, that is now school. That was, yeah. That was one of the changes we made as part of the SCE before approval. That's still part of the schools.
And on your...
For which, for...
Where have...
So the two buildings where we want to try to highlight that, and we can come back with better imagery as well. So in this, in this, these images here were the precedent images for the multifamily apartment building.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's the precedent image, not for this, but for the further building down here. So, so maybe I wasn't clear. So did, so each of those precedents goes with a different part of the building. So the combination of these two precedents here, the kind of Shanford corner, the panel between the windows, and then this kind of window style, was the precedent for this building here. And you can kind of see the similar window patterns, the Shanford at the edge, these kind of tower elements, the kind of brick pillar elements. The more modern version, which is this upper right one, is the precedent for, for this building here. We'll, we'll do better imagery of this, I apologize, these are very early, but that was the concept there. And then the, you know, I don't think we have a precedent image for...
Picture right there. I think picture of FBI...
Oh, come on, that's not true. The FBI building is...
Well, but I think, again, these are concept level renderings, there's going to be materiality, detailing, all of those things are coming in the future. I mean, we, we understand your...
What on earth?
Well, we're seeing the history tour in December, not only as an architectural, to help us understand architecture, but also to help us better understand some of the history, you know, stories, big and small. We heard, we've heard something about the Teddy Bear comic first was drawn by someone that lived here, so our Teddy Bear is a part of the history of Falls Church. That's one of many small, I, I will give you the notes after the, after the historic tour, but we, we've heard about all kinds of important people that lived here, important areas that, that, names that we can use, all, all these pieces. It's not just to take historic architecture and recreate it here, but to really try to understand the city better, while still making sure that we're having a really good mix of speaking a language that people of Falls Church can understand, but also, also making sure that this feels of its time now, but also has a timeless quality for the future. I mean, I think architecture is, is subjective, you know, we can perhaps agree to disagree.
Hold on. No, they can't. So there's two traffic lights that are being created there. You can turn left into the Commons from Leesburg Pike, so that's where a lot of the cars will go. You can also turn left from Haycock in two different locations into the project, both of which will be lights. The garage, in this situation, 80% of our parking, it has the ability to flow out in each direction from that garage. So from an auto-flow perspective, it's actually better, and that's our traffic engineer has started to look at those numbers. I don't disagree with you that, you know, ideally, it would be a smaller block, although it is only 530 feet long, it's not, you know, a thousand-foot New York City block. But the, but from an architecture perspective, I just want to close, I mean, we'll, this is obviously an early, an early concept of where we're headed with architecture, we're happy to get feedback and talk through you in more detail with, with different thoughts about it, especially if you have other ideas on how you see these precedents or other precedents we should look at. We're always happy to have that type of input, that's partly why we're doing these meetings. But the, but yeah, I mean, I think our goal is for this to be a beautiful-looking warehouse style building, and I can show you other buildings we've both done in our projects that have that sense of style, and it may just not be coming clear in this, in this image.
I think also, can I just make one more point? To the, the size of this block is also dictated by the size of the grocery store, which is, makes up the entire first floor of this space, and that is a typical grocery store size. So some of the porosity is, is just not as possible here, which is why we tried to vary the size and shape and orientation of the other buildings that have a little bit more flexibility.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions? Yeah.
Yeah, one issue that has arisen...
Okay. Right.
I guess I would say to that, so I...
Do you want to hit inside the buildings and I can talk outside?
Well, I, so I think with, within the buildings, right, we may do something like dogwash stations or things to help take care of the dogs, maybe a possible dog run. I mean, I guess I was just going to say that this has come up multiple times, and I think we are, we are still working to create the right solution. We haven't hit on it yet, but I, we definitely understand that people are going to have dogs, and we want to make sure that, you know, that's not going to be an issue when you're doing yoga in the middle of, of the, you know, it's, it's what's the right balance for everyone, so I would...
Yeah, so then, and the outside, so there, there are some really creative things that people are doing inside buildings, where you have amenity space, where you're actually using kind of turf that's, you know, has less of a smell, and it's washable and can be cleanable, that dogs can at least, the quick, you know, midnight, I have to go to the bathroom, you just take them out quickly. And so that's becoming pretty common in most apartment buildings at this point. We're also looking at spaces within the project where we can, through design, locate spots where it's more likely that the dogs will go when they get right outside the residential entrances, which is what typically happens, and you want to try to avoid them hitting the landscape and destroying all the flowers. So we have some kind of fun ideas, we've talked about where, you know, is there a mural on the wall of, you know, a dog peeing on a, on a, on a, what's called a fire hydrant, and then that becomes a space that, you know, the community knows that's where you go right outside the residential entrance. It's a, it's a difficult thing, because you're right, some people don't pick up after their dogs, and we want to have a dog-friendly environment. And I do think people still will walk their dogs in the neighborhood, because if they want to go on a long 20-minute walk, you know, obviously our site's only 10 acres, they're going to go do that in the neighborhood anyway. But we'll make sure that there are spaces throughout our project where there can be relief stations that are not next to the, where you're doing yoga, and in places that might be, you know, behind the, behind the, you know, maybe closer to the loading docks or places that might already have a little bit of a smell to them, might be the types of places where you put those. But thank you. Yeah.
That's great. So what if it was the stairwell and...
Mm-hmm. So I don't, we haven't, yeah, so we haven't gotten that far, I mean, you can see it here, you know, fairly, fairly wide staircase, that's shown as 10 feet, whether it's 10 or 15, we haven't gotten that far along yet.
Actually 12 feet.
Oh, it's 12, sorry. And you can see that it's outside of the edge of the building, because we want the staircase to be outside before you get up. That is open air going all the way up as well, so once you get up there, you're not covered. And then the thought of what we'd like to do within it is, is to drop kind of a layer of lighting. Uh-oh, did I just break it? Oh, come on. There we go. You can kind of see it here a little bit, but to do something where we're dropping a layer of lighting going down through that space, once again, it's only 120 feet long, so it's not a particularly long space, but do something where you have lighting or something above you, so it starts making it feel a little bit less of a tunnel than it might be. And so that's, that's some early designs, as I said, this is a, does a concept that's only two to three weeks old, and so we're still working through that.
So the light...
Exactly. Yep.
And then, maybe that's...
Uh-huh.
Is that what's allowed?
Great question. So as of right now, it's designed, let me just get to the plan, sorry. There we go. So as of right now, it's designed as a left-in, right-in, right-out, and we do not have a left-out.
If you're taking a take on that...
Right.
And the third thing with...
We don't know yet, so we're, we don't know. Every project I've done, I've tried to do grass, and we've done grass, and then we've ripped it out because it gets destroyed. So I think we have to see what that's going to be. There are some turf products now that actually are permeable, that actually, you know, are good from an environmental perspective, that feel good as well. So that's something we need to talk through with the community. You know, I think if we were doing a very passive park, where there wasn't going to be a lot of activity, clearly you would just do grass. I think in a situation like this, if we're going to really use it as a very heavily-trafficked living room, where you have stuff going on regularly and people sitting out watching movies on a regular basis, it may end up being turf. So that's something we're still thinking through.
And you've got a...
Yep.
And you have a...
Yep. Yeah, it's actually great. So one of the great benefits of the project, this is showing it a little bit off, north-south is actually on an angle like this. And so what you get is great morning sun on these buildings, I'm sorry, morning sun on these buildings, great afternoon sun on these buildings. These are all relatively short buildings, so in our shadow studies, these open spaces stay really nice and bright. In the summer, they're bright really late. So that, so it'll be a nice sunny space. We're actually thinking the opposite, which is creating shade structures to make sure that when they are really hot in the summer, we're thinking about how we shade them as well, because I think they'll have almost too much sun in some cases.
Could you talk a little more about...
Sure. Sure. So, so in that case, you know, the Rushmark team was selected almost a year ago, and then Womata put out an RFQ, Rushmark and Womata, sorry, Rushmark, EYAP and Hoffman joined together and submitted for the Womata site. We were selected in, I believe it was September, and so, and now we're going through our process with them of getting our joint development agreement executed. The, we meet regularly with the Rushmark team every other week, which is the Virginia Tech Development Team. And since we are the high school team, we are, you know, essentially meeting with them every other week. And so we've been coordinating exactly how this street would go through from our site to their site, how the bike lanes will go through, the park and open spaces, the utilities, literally everything that you'd want to see coordinated between the three teams is being done on a regular basis. Every other week we meet, we talk to each other five times in between, and we're going through the comprehensive plan process at Fairfax County together. So the Virginia Tech site, the Womata site, and all the developers working on it are jointly going through that process as one, so it makes that a pretty well-coordinated project as well.
I guess I would just say in terms of timing expectation, though, this site will be done before the other two sites.
Yeah. Yeah, so one thing we, I'm sorry. Oh, what they're, what they're building there?
Yeah.
So they're, yeah, so the, the main heart of the retail part of the project, we don't want to over-retail the site and end up having a problem with empty retail, so the main part of the retail will be on the high school site. Sorry, where's this clicker again? Come on! Forget it. I'm going without it. So the main part of the retail will be within our site. There will be, you know, maybe 50,000 feet of retail that, that continues on through to the Womata site. That'll be a little bit different in character. So this site would be more, a lot more restaurant, a lot more active, the grocery store, as you get further north, it'll get more into service-oriented retail that you need in a project as well, you know, whether it's your drugstore and your, you know, your dry cleaner and your hair salon and your nail salon and your, you know, your pet store and all the other stuff you need in the neighborhood, that will bleed further north, because we really do want to keep the energy, you know, evenings and weekends surrounding this kind of open space, and we don't want it just to bleed out over this very long street. The overall retail street, once it's created, it will be as long as Mosaic's retail street from, you know, the Hyatt and where the Target is, all the way back to the residential building, which is a pretty long street. And so you can imagine if we had kind of two separate anchors, it would separate out the people and it wouldn't feel as active, so we're going to really keep that here. That project will have academic space, it'll have office space, it'll have residential apartments, as well as some condos, as well as some townhomes, as well as some office space, so similar mix. And, and that kind of continuation of the street grid going all the way through.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So just trying to... I'm assuming, just by the...
Mm-hmm.
How that architecture, the project to the more... With the place of, or place of building...
Yep.
Closing to the high school, so it's the architecture of the high school? Or is it...
Right. Yeah, we also envision, you know, with what Virginia Tech is doing next door, which is, you know, we, we envision that, you know, you could have graduate students living in that building, you know, you could have faculty members from Blacksburg coming up and living there for a semester, so we feel like that might have some relationship to what's going on next door, which we're excited about. And then, yes, we are working with the Rushmark team, as well as our own team, on heights and massing. So the project is densest actually in the city parcel, and then you all know why, because we were funding the high school, so we needed the density here. So it's densest here, and it actually tapers down towards the metro, which is a little different than what mo, most metro station areas do in this region, where the highest density is typically at the metro and tapers the other way. The reason for that in our case is, I'll just go back to one of the slides at the beginning very quickly. The reason is that we have a metro station that's fairly hidden, unlike a lot of the more typical urban-style metro stations. It's out in the middle of Route 66, and it's not just in the middle of Route 66, but it's off in the corner, once you even get to Route 66. So looking at this image, you know, that's your metro station here, so you've got this huge barrier of Route 66, and even if you created a, a main street that went through, you're not even hitting the metro. So what we need to do is make sure that we have safe, active, and, you know, eyes on the street, all the way access to the metro, so it feels safe and comfortable, but the kind of excitement and rhythm of the site is really here. So it'll be a little bit different, it'll be a little more residential neighborhood-y as you get back towards the metro, and a little bit more higher-density commercial towards the city site. And that's also in the comprehensive plan for the county, it's recommended to be a more residential site back there anyway, so it's consistent with where they had been always thinking it would go.
So I want to go back to, to how the feel of the whole site.
Mm-hmm.
Stories that people, the pictures they get when they... When you look at the warehouse style, some of the precedents you show there, they're buildings that look like it was a warehouse that had been renovated, that had always been, and then others looked like, oh, we're doing an homage to the warehouse. And I think part of what I, as I am, would be that there was a warehouse district here. Been here for 100 years, and, you know, the trains would come over here, whatever it is, but it got run down, and now we've come in, we've renovated, but obviously this is all fiction.
Right.
But I think that's a fiction, a story.
Right. So...
Actually, the, the modern building in the corner, you know, kind of took it where, okay, they're used to eating one, two-story...
Uh-huh.
Commercial property, retail property, and they renovated it and stuck a building on top of it.
So it's a, it's a good point, and I've done, I'm, I'm working on a project right now, actually, where what you're talking about is exactly the concept we're doing, where we'll have more of an old warehousey feel throughout. And even at Pike and Rose, we had one or two buildings that we did more of that work with. The thought here is a little different. So we do have the apartment building, which ultimately will feel like it was an old warehouse building, that's the concept there. We have the base of the hotel building, which is supposed to have a similar feel, where that could be an old building that was built above. The condo building, we are specifically going with a modern interpretation of a warehouse, like clearly doing something unique and different there, and partially because the buyers of the condos that we have done our market research on want something like that. And partially also, because I, and I'll say this, I know, it's funny, we, when we first started talking with the City Falls Church originally and doing our community outreach here, the feedback we initially got was that people really want, you know, you got to do historic, it's got to be brick, it's got to look of the city. As we started talking to more and more people, we actually got a lot of the opposite reaction of, from many people, we want something unique and different and modern, it's the west end of the city, it's not in the central core, we want something here that could be different. We want something that is exciting and unique as well, we want some of the buildings to feel that way. And I know you're shaking your head, but...
There's differences of opinion.
Well, there's differences of opinions, right? It's hard, architecture is subjective and it's hard. But, but it's, and trust me, I, there's nothing, either, both of our companies love nothing more than warehouse district architecture. I mean, that's, you guys have done hundreds of those buildings. The condo building, we are specifically going with a modern interpretation of a warehouse, like clearly doing something unique and different there. And partially because the buyers of the condos that we have done our market research on want something like that. And partially also, because, and I'll say this, I know, it's funny, when we first started talking with the City Falls Church originally and doing our community outreach here, the feedback we initially got was that people really want, you know, you've got to do historic, it's got to be brick, it's got to look of the city. As we started talking to more and more people, we actually got a lot of the opposite reaction of, from many people, we want something unique and different and modern. It's the west end of the city, it's not in the central core. We want something here that could be different. We want something that is exciting and unique as well. We want some of the buildings to feel that way. And I know you're shaking your head, but.
There's differences.
Well, there's differences of opinions, right? It's hard, architecture is subjective and it's hard. But, but it's, and trust me, I, there's nothing, either, both of our companies love nothing more than warehouse district architecture. I mean, that's, you guys have done hundreds of those buildings. And that could be a direction we go, you know, it could be. But I think there's, there is an opportunity here, because it's on the west end of the city, to do something that's a little bit different, a little bit, in some cases for some people, more exciting. For the office, we know we need glass, that has to be a modern-looking building, that's a critical for leasing. We're competing with buildings in Tysons that are all glass. And so we need, that building has to be modern. For the younger building, we thought that was a fun way to play with it. You know, if the whole city hates that, it can change, it's not the end of the world. But for the other buildings, we try to kind of be respectful of a style and do something more modern. If the feedback we get over time is, this is awful, just go plain, you know, warehouse, like, you know, it's not the end of the world. But I, but what I'll say is, most of the feedback we're getting so far is the opposite. People are like excited that it is unique.
Give me positive feedback right now, so.
Yeah. There you go. Sorry.
I guess I'll also just say, not only through the, the kind of modern take on things that, or, again, I'd say transitional, because we had played with going like in a really modern direction and have gotten back from that. But not only will the architecture tell the story, but we're working on the whole branding process. And that's going to come through in a lot of the story that we're still working to create for this space. And also, you'll see that a lot in placemaking with some of the materials, there may be even historic plaques that refer to other, other things that have happened in the city, but also with the art, with sculpture, things like that. So I think that there are, when you think about somewhere that you go that feels really good and rich, there are a lot of layers to that. We're like on layer one right now.
Right.
Knowing that we have many more layers to add. So we look forward to everybody's feedback as we continue to add more of those layers in.
I'll get your question in one second. What I love about what you were saying is what you were doing, the ideating and this creation of this story, is exactly what we've been doing for the last few months. And that's why we, you know, want to make sure we're doing the bus tour, making sure we get as much history of Falls Church as well. It's going to be really critical, and it will come through in our placemaking and branding. But for example, you know, we have this building in the center of the park that hasn't really been designed yet at all. And so, you know, does that become the initial building that was the old historic building on the site, and the whole project's built around it, and the park is built around it? There's so many ways we can do and achieve what you're thinking about, that doesn't have to be all the architecture, it could be pieces of it. And I don't know that we've figured that out yet. As I said, this is really early, so it's rare to have a development team come out and present something to the community that's so sketch, because it's sketchy, because it's actually vulnerable for us.
Sometimes it's a little bit frustrating, I think, for people to look at, because you want a more thorough picture, and, but we also are trying to get feedback.
Yeah.
Before we're too.
Okay.
But I guess I would just also say that we want to create a story, but we want to create a story that's believable and real and still rooted in the history of Falls Church. And unfortunately, we did commission a study of this site, and unfortunately, it was a farm, and then it was a school, and that's really it. So the site, we were hoping had, had some great, I mean, we were just hoping for, for a bigger story to tell, so that's why we're kind of stepping beyond the bounds and trying to understand more detail about Falls Church to help bring that history in.
I'm sorry, there was a woman over here with her hand up for a long time.
Yes, go ahead.
Want to talk about?
Oh, the, sorry.
Are they kind of going to be energy efficient?
Yes.
Uh-huh. Yep. So I can hit bikes, and then you can hit energy efficiency.
That sounds great. Do you have any other sustainability questions you want to ask? Because I can hit all of those at one time.
But actually, I like, I like.
Okay, so on the bike side, we spent a lot of time in the S E E, talking through that, coordinating with the schools. That's one of their biggest issues. They'd like to increase the number of kids who are biking to school as well. It helps them, you know, not have as many parkers on the site as well. And so, I didn't go into a lot of detail, because these are already approved as part of the S E E, but we have dedicated bike lanes running north-south in the commons itself. We have a new shared-use path running along the entire frontage here, along Route 7, so that buildings will be set back from 7. You'll have a 12-foot shared-use path running along that entire edge, which is great for bikes as well. There's a new dedicated bike shared-use path running here to the schools as well, and there's a new wide shared-use path running up this entire edge. As well as new intersection crossings here, here, and here, and here. So if you're a cyclist coming from the neighboring properties, obviously there's not much I can do in front of the other parcels that we don't control. Once you are at this corner or anywhere on this edge, you will have a safe bike path to the school and perosity throughout. This does go away as one of your options, but you have two different ways to get safely into the site. And quite frankly, you're right. I mean, you could go into the garage and take the elevator up and come through, but I doubt people will do that with their bikes. But we did, we did spend a lot of time thinking through these, how wide they are, what they look like. We worked with staff on that as well, and that was all inside our, in our S E E as well. And here, the bike lanes are actually on the park side, so that you have cars, and then you have the bike lanes, and you have the park. So you don't get doored by people opening their door from parked spaces. The bike lanes are on the inside towards the park. It also allows you, just in case a car is coming and trying to, you know, get around a car that's parking, and that car swerves into the bike lane, you have a four-foot off-ramp into the park, where there'll be a, kind of a paved portion of the park, where the bikes can get out into if they need to. So we've really created a nice wide space there for bike safety. But yeah, we are very focused on, on bike issues. We understand that that's important to the city. And I'll, oh, sorry, and those bike lanes will continue all the way to the metro as well. So it's not just getting to the high school, it's people being able to get to the metro, families that live in East Falls Church, you know, near the East Falls Church metro, being able to get on the metro, come to the school, residents and kids being able to get to the metro to go places as well is important. I'm sorry, let's answer the sustainability question. Got it. Okay. Right, the wheels lock. Okay, that's helpful feedback. Okay, yeah, we can, we can think through that.
Yeah, I think that's something we can work through with our retailer to answer your, um, yeah, to answer your energy-efficient question. So the entire project is lead, is going for lead gold neighborhood development, which has some pretty strict energy requirements for all of the outdoor spaces. And then within each building is also going to be lead-certified to a minimum silver or gold level, depending on the building type. So that requires a pretty significant energy efficiency effort, also water efficiency, and not just energy efficiency through lighting, but also through mechanical systems in the buildings. So yes, they will all be energy-efficient.
I don't know the answer to that question. I know Kristen's behind you from the schools. I think you're intending to have a, somebody to help with bus ingress and egress here on that end. Kind of pedestrian. Got it. Right. And at that intersection, too. Here as well. Yeah, so both of these intersections now will be full, full traffic lights, so there'll be a block signal and a pedestrian crossing at all of. Yeah, there'll be a pedestrian crossing, in this case, only on one side, because the are not aligned. That was part of a request from the county to not have Chestnut open to traffic. There was a request of the Fairfax County folks down here. That's why we've all set the intersection the way we have.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, thank you for trees. So, so there will be, there will be trees throughout the site. Well, Gabby, why don't you, we can talk a little bit about tree canopy coverage. There'll be trees around all of the buildings on the sidewalks, there'll be trees throughout the common space. High school, I believe, is, aren't you replacing or creating a tree grove within the plaza? Kristen?
Kristen.
Sorry. Within the plaza, are you creating a tree grove, I think? Okay, to replace the trees that had been planted on the original site?
Yeah.
A lot of those beautiful trees on the site will come down, you're correct, because we're obviously covering most of the site with, so that's unfortunate. And so we're kind of being careful about what we're, what we're choosing for trees, so they begin trees that grow and become beautiful over time. We're also going to have a good amount of green roof on these buildings as well, from an environmental perspective. But, but you are right, most of those trees are, the buildings are going to be. I'm sorry, behind you first. So it depends on where they are. So, so the bike lane up here will be up on the curb, so outside of the auto traffic. The ones on Commons Drive are six-foot, they are flush with the auto lane to the left of the auto lane, and then they have a four-foot rumble strip to the left of that. So it's 10 feet of space, which is pretty wide. So there's not a protection between them, partially because that's also fire access, so it needs to be 20 feet wide. But they are wide. So it gives you the ability as a, as a cyclist, if a car is, you know, coming towards you, you have the ability to get over to the left versus being up against a curb. So that's how we've kind of thought through solving that issue. But the ones up top will be up on the curb.
There also, there also, in Ward of the Commons, one thought was to avoid, you know, parallel parking, you know, going into the bike lane. So it's on the other side of where the, the street parking would be, so hopefully a little more safer on that side.
Right. Right, it's six feet each way, so, so 12 feet total. Sure. It is still, yeah. So, so I will say what I think, and then Kristen, correct me if I'm wrong. So the middle school will still drop off through their own parking lot here. Those kids will come in off of Leesburg Pike, circulate through and come out. The buses will stack here. And then originally, the idea was that the high school kid drop-off would be within this parking lot. And so what we've designed is this turnaround here, where cars will come in, make a right turn, there's enough room for about 12 cars to stack before they drop off, and then come back out. They can circulate back out to Mustang Alley, circulate down to Leesburg Pike, they can come in off Leesburg Pike. In reality, they could actually go into the garage and through to Mustang Alley, or down to Street A as well. But at that time of day, given that it's not peak, more than likely, they would be coming out this way through Mustang Alley if they're going back towards the city. And now there'll be a traffic light there, which will make that movement easier. If cars want to go out and go left as well, they'll be able to do that there, too. Yes, there are sidewalks here as well. Yeah. Oh, Alley 3?
Yeah.
Yeah, there will be a pedestrian connection through, but not an auto connection through, because that's a green, that's a green space there as well. There were a few other hands in that zone, yeah. At Falls Church Drive, right. Yes. So, so one of the things that actually is bad for traffic is when you have traffic lights spaced so far apart, that cars kind of speed up, and then they stop, and they wait, and they wait, they speed up, they stop, they wait, they wait. So part of the solution, this site is somewhat limited in how it can solve traffic issues, because it doesn't have the larger connection all the way through the site. What really starts solving traffic issues is the larger development on the entire quadrant. And so, in our Fairfax County work, we're actually doing quite a bit, we are literally working on our traffic analysis right now for the overall, let me get to that, hold on a second. Sorry. Okay, there we go. So, as part of our Fairfax County work, we've been doing our traffic study. We'll be submitting that to the county in the next month or so. By winter, there'll be a whole bunch of conversations. And so, we do actually, we've come up with some ideas, which we can't share publicly yet, that really take some pressure off Haycock and 7. A few of those ideas you know about, one of which is the connection of 66 to the Route 7 off-ramp, which allows cars to avoid that intersection. So for those that don't know about that, cars in the future, oh, sorry about this pointer. Come on, you can do it. Can do it. I know, I have faith in you. Ah, it's so frustrating. There we go. Okay, so cars in the future here will be able to come off Route 66, connect onto the Route 7 off-ramp, and get right over to Falls Church Drive to the metro. So that movement takes about 300 to 400 cars that today come to this intersection and get them out of that intersection. So that alone starts helping this intersection quite a bit. The left turn into our site, once that road is connected all the way through to Haycock, takes additional cars out of that movement, because you'll have cars that can go this way, as well as cars that can go this way. Similarly, if you're coming from your neighborhoods here, or from Fairfax County, and you want to go to Tysons, you won't have to come all the way here to go right anymore. You'll be able to get onto this secondary street grid and make a right, or you'll be able to go onto Falls Church Drive and make a right. And so there's some solutions that start getting traffic out of the way. We've started looking at intersection design here, and ways to actually improve that the way it works today. And then to your answer, the ideal situation is having relatively evenly-spaced traffic lights that you can time, so that they're working collectively. And so that's the idea here, is you'd have one, two, three in a row, the fourth one's over here. But those three in a row will work as a system. Similarly, going this direction, these two are really nicely spaced, and then there's another one here. So those will work as a system to get cars through. There's some other thoughts and ideas that we have that, you know, will hopefully, you know, if they get by in from Fairfax County, be something interesting. And then the last piece is, what we'd like to see is some coordinated way to get this infrastructure spine in before this project opens. So if we're going to open in 2023, you know, it gives us three years to figure out how to get that piece of road built prior to these developments getting built. And so that's something we're going to start working with the city and the county to see if there's a way to coordinate and get that open. So when this project delivers on day one, you've got that connection to Metro. Now, the next part of this is a larger kind of transitory development question, right? Like, how do you really start solving traffic issues in this region? And a lot of that comes from, when you take a 40-acre parcel like this and make it all bike pedestrian-friendly, you just increase the amount of people around it that will be willing to consider taking Metro or biking, or whatever it may be. And so, you know, we had a, a meeting earlier today at Virginia Tech, we were giving a presentation there, and I asked how many people in that room of 50 take Metro to get to work, and maybe four people raised their hands. And that's right there. But, you know, evening, walking out of school at 11 o'clock at night, walking through a dark parking lot, getting to a Metro that's in the middle of 66, it doesn't feel particularly safe today. So how do we make it feel safe and connected? If you live down in this neighborhood in Fairfax County today, you've got to go all the way to Haycock to cross Route 7, and then go all the way back to the Metro, which is an incredibly big inconvenience. So just having that pedestrian crossing there, the bike crossing as well. There are some slides from our Fairfax County presentation I don't have here today, that show the walk shed, as well as the bike shed. You know, with electric bikes and electric scooters now, people are starting to be able to travel very quickly from larger distances. So you can envision people, you can cover 10 to 15 minutes from that, from our metro station. You can get to all of the surrounding metro stations on a scooter, electric scooter, within 10 to 15 minutes. So you have people now who are completely not accessible to Metro, that, you know, with technology, three years, five years, seven years from now, when this project becomes great, we'll have that access. And I'd close with Sherrlington, which is a great example, if any of you know it, it's very similar size to this, it's 40 acres as well, similar scale. And in Sherrlington, they have a mode split there, which is the number of people who don't drive in their own car to work every day approaching 40%. It is not on Metro. And the way they've achieved that is through transit, a really great transit center that is a shuttle going back and forth to the Metro, as well as creating the concept of walkability. In that area, before Sherrlington was built, it's a very suburban neighborhood, not so dissimilar to this. When they filled the hole in the doughnut in with this great walkable neighborhood, the community around it got used to walking to restaurants, got used to walking to that neighborhood, and then it increased the amount of people willing to take that next step, which is the shuttle to the Metro. So even the neighborhoods around Sherrlington have seen a 5% increase in the amount of people that take Metro. So I think what we see here is, once this project happens, you'll get 5%, maybe 10% more people out of their cars in the general neighborhood, that starts taking some cars off the trip, so, off the road. So every way we can cut into it, we've got to, we've got to use every strategy, and the development here will start helping there. Right. So, yeah. So in Fairfax County, that's come up in a lot of our conversations. So the Piment Road and the Lemon Road communities up here would love to have some sort of pedestrian connection to Metro. There used to be, because there used to be a drop-off over in that zone, you could actually get to it. When they built the Metro tracks here, the kind of waystation for maintenance of, when they built Silverline, they put that Metro maintenance facility there, it actually cut off that path that you're talking about. So the connectivity to the Metro is no longer there. But that's something that's been asked of Metro, and I imagine they'll, you know, talk to Metro about it in the future. I don't know if that will ever happen. So, you know, it, it's a good question. It would be great if there was better access from that side. Maybe that's something that, you know, the county can think about going forward. Yeah. We don't. So, so what we're going to do is design streets that make, that are designed so cars can't go faster than 20 miles per hour. I don't care how many cars come through my site, the more the better, the more the better for the retail, the better for eyes on the street, the better for safety, but they're going to. No, but even then, as long as it's designed, which it is, as a road that will encourage cars to go slowly, you know, one of the biggest problems we have as a region is we've cars to go slowly, you know, one of the biggest problems we have as a region is we've allowed ourselves to lock all of our streets up, and no left turns, no right turns, no this, no that, and it's forced all the cars onto the major roads. And what Arlington did very differently when they developed the metro is, as a philosophy, they created calmer streets surrounding their urban zones, but they didn't restrict as much of the cars' ability to go in those streets. You need porosity. The only way you are ever going to solve your traffic issues is having a grid of streets and allowing cars to go on them. And then what we have to do as responsible planners is design those streets so the cars can't go fast enough to kill somebody. I mean, that's really the issue. Once cars get to 35 miles per hour, you are much more likely to die in a car accident than if you get hit by a car going 20. And so we want cars to go on Mustang Alley. We want them to go on our main street. We want them to use Falls Church Drive. I want all those cars spreading in as many ways as possible, so that they get out of that intersection of Haycock and 7, and start making the whole place get unlocked. So it's a different philosophy in transportation planning that's taking probably more precedence these days. Arlington was on the cutting edge of it. But, yeah, it's really critical. There's so many neighborhoods in Montgomery -- I live in DC. When you go up to Montgomery County, where I work, I mean, it's like you are forced to go on the major streets in all these places, largely because the wealthier homeowners in Chevy Chase and Bethesda fought the county and got restrictions. And all that means is that these public roads that were paid for with public dollars are inaccessible, and thus, the grid is reduced. So we've got to make sure that those roads are designed correctly, and then you can have more accessibility. But, yeah, I definitely want the cars on Mustang Alley, and I do. It helps. For bikes, for pads, yep. They're less likely to -- the only reason I say this, so, I mean, I was being a little tongue-in-cheek, but they're less likely to, because there's no traffic light when you get out onto 7 from Mustang Alley. So you're more likely to go, you know, through the streets that have better accessibility. But there definitely will be cars that do it. Yeah, I agree. I agree. Yeah. Oh, it can go to 15 stories, that building. So I don't have those here tonight. I did -- that was part of our S E E. They're included in our package, so I can email this to you, or we can get those to you separately. But we did all that work as part of the S E E. There's some shadowing in the late afternoon on the community behind Federal Realty. Yeah, I'll show you the studies. It doesn't touch -- it touches one of the apartment buildings essentially behind Federal Realty. It doesn't get into the single-family neighborhood behind that. Okay, we can show -- I mean, it's in our public S E E, you know, documents. We have that. You can take a look and see. In the morning, it goes to Whole Foods. Well, all of that, we've -- so in our S E E application, we have, I believe, we have 8:00 a.m., 10:00 a.m., noon, 4:00 p.m., 6:00 p.m. We have multiple times of years and all those analyses. They were done by computer based upon our design. So all of that is publicly accessible, and you can go on the county's website and actually view it all. But when we did our shadow studies and analyses, other than in the wintertime, when it's shadows, I mean, you could get a -- in December, you can get a shadow from, you know, out here from Washington Monument. You know, it's just because the sun is so low. But most of the year, we had great sun results from our shadow studies. So that wasn't -- that ended up not being a big concern once we did the studies, but please take a look if you don't mind. Or any other questions out there? Yeah. It's the tallest building, yeah.
Well, that's the tallest building. It's allowed.
Right.
On -- for most of the building types, they could go up to 15 stories. Again, we showed, kind of shadowed in for the office, just up to 10 right now. Currently, we're not planning to design, to build any 15-story buildings, but it just depends with the office. If we get good tenants for the first building or the second building, they could be taller, and then the condo. But we're not, based on construction types, for the Phase 1 condo, Phase 1 apartments, we're not anticipating that they would go any taller than they are now.
So most of the buildings you saw today were six to seven stories. The senior housing building is around 12, so that's the tallest building right now. And then those two future -- the office building is seven?
The office building is seven. Again, it could go up to 15. We have ghosted it into 10 right now, just to show a little bit more of what that could look like. The second office building could go up to 15. It's also ghosted in at 10 right now.
Right.
So we're trying to kind of show you where we are, show you where it could go. But again, our --
Expectation is that it wouldn't be that tall.
Right, and just going back to the two apartments and the condo that are currently contemplated, are wood frame construction on top of a concrete podium. We're at the maximum height that that construction type could do, so it would be a total redesign. If, you know, we wanted to do a 12-story apartment building, we'd have to start from scratch, basically. So we do not plan to do that.
Sure, of course.
Right, so we are still working on that right now. It looks like it's going to be about 125 condos in that building. The average unit size, if you kind of smoosh all the different unit types together, is about 1,100 square feet. I don't think we're planning on studios. We're more planning on one bedrooms, one-bed dens, two-bedroom, two-bed den, and we're debating if we want to go to a three-bedroom. So we're still working through the unit mix. We'll have more clarity on that in January. But, yeah, so I think there's a variety of options for people. And I will also mention, there is a limited affordable housing component to the apartment and condo. 6% of that is required to be affordable housing per our agreement with the city. So there is an opportunity to bring in some people who may not typically be able to come into this space. That's correct.
Affordable? So the rents are subsidized, essentially the market rate units in the building subsidize the affordable rents, because units can never have rents that are higher than a certain level. And it's just part of the deed of the building. So what we have right now is, what we ask for, actually, is to move it all to the rental buildings, to not have them in the condo buildings, because the concern in the condo buildings of them, of the tenants not being able to afford the condo fee, which is pretty extraordinary, and you don't have the ability by law to limit that the affordable units pay into a condo fee. So that becomes an issue. So as we've been working with the city, we've been talking about doing more of the unit styles they need in the city, which they've been talking about studios and two-bedrooms, which is the area where they're struggling. One bedrooms, they have a -- so the way to do that would be to move more of the rental building. We haven't come to agreement with the affordable housing staff yet. That's something we're working. There are buildings, though, when they are condo affordable units, they are restricted by deed as affordable units. And then every jurisdiction is different. In some jurisdictions, the -- who can buy those units is -- the city has a hand in that process. In some jurisdictions, they're pre-approved by the seller of the condo, going through their financial. So the condo fee doesn't include anything within the unit, replacing the roof every however many years, or gaining the electricity and always -- orders of the building to clean it, trash removal. It's the general maintenance of a building, which is just expensive. In a rental building, that's paid for by the owner of the building. You just pay it as operating expenses. In a condo building, the owners of the building have to cover all of those expenses, which can get pretty expensive, replacing windows, cleaning facades of the building once a year. So when you add all that up and divide it by the number of condo owners, you know, you end up with a condo fee that everybody has to share in.
Yeah, I mean, we're still planning that these condo fees are going to be typical of the market.
Right.
This area. It's just, again, if you are -- have a
Restricted income, right.
Restricted income, then we've found that's typically becomes an issue.
In many jurisdictions, in DC, Montgomery County, they're actually encouraging you not to do affordable units in the condos and to push them into rental buildings, because then the jurisdiction has more control over those units over the time. And you also don't end up with people who buy a unit and then, five to 10 years from now, end up with much higher income, but have gotten the benefit of owning a unit, buying a unit very inexpensively, who, you know, just because the nature of the fact that they bought it when they were 28, and then they become 40, and all of a sudden, they're making $150,000 a year, they then could qualify for a market rate unit. In the rental units, once you are at a point where your income has risen above the affordable level, you're then forced to move into a market rate unit.
It's like an annual check.
So it's a -- so from a longevity of affordability, it's a better model than for sale.
Any other questions?
Yeah, we've kept you a long time. Thank you all. So we will be back again in December with more information, again in January when we submit. As I said, please email us questions, or if you need, you know, feel free to go through Carley to get in touch with us as well, or feedback as well, if you didn't want to say it in front of the whole room. And then we look forward to working with all of you over the next year.
I'll just add, in closing, the agenda's out front. Have the site's webpage. So there's the approved special exception entitlement up there, and then the upcoming dates, my contact information. And there's a sign-in sheet also. So thank you all for coming.